I'm going to call this meeting of the City Council Ordinance Subcommittee Meeting, March 11th, to order. It looks like we have all of us here. We don't have any meetings to approve.
Minutes.
Minutes to approve, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak to a subject that is not on the agenda? The only thing that's on the agenda is the proposal to adopt a welcoming city trust ordinance. So if there's anybody to speak on anything else, please come up to the podium. There's a sign-in sheet up, but just for the minutes, if you could just say your name and address, that'd be great.
I'll just try to make it brief because I know you were all busy. My name is Janice Hoffman. I live on Laurel Drive in town. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to speak to, which is the condition of our roads. You know, I just lost a brand-new tire. It didn't even have 40 miles on it, and I had to pay $300 to have it replaced. I think the roads are so bad, it's beyond patching. Patching, there's more patch than road. I know the answer always is, we don't have any money. We always have no money. But get a find a way because people are paying a hidden tax. I just paid $300 in a hidden tax because I went into one of the Queen Mother potholes in town, and she was a doos. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is the rank voting that the people are considering or someone's proposing, I believe it's Counselor Peak. I am totally against that. I think it's a disenfranchisement of the voter. I don't think anybody should be tampering with the ballot. I am of the feeling that one man, one vote. And the reason this was done in Maine, I have a sister who lives in Maine, was to get rid of, it was a maneuver, to get rid of a very, very unpopular governor. And I think they may turn around and change things.
Is this microphone working?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is, thank you. All right. I think that's basically all the other things. And the other things, I tried to contact you, the City Council. I don't know if you got my emails. I sent email, I looked on the site, and I think I typed it correctly. You know how that is, stall thumbs. And two or three addresses came, kicked back and said the mail was not deliverable. I don't know how often that site is maintained in terms of, like, who's looking at the addresses and correcting any errors on it so that we can get in touch with you guys. And I think there was an error on meeting times, like tonight's meeting, I don't think was on the, I may be wrong in that one, but if you could just take a look at that so that it might be easier for us to get in contact. So those are the basic things I want to talk to you about beforehand.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our new business. And I'm just gonna, before we start, the flow of how it's going to go tonight is Counselor Coniff, who introduced this, is going to give us the rationale and some of the supporting documents around that. Then we'll open it up to people to be able to comment on what Counselor Coniff has presented. And once we do that, I'm going to try to limit people to two to three minutes. But since we don't have a full house, I think maybe we'll go with three minutes. And from there, we'll probably talk internally and close the public comment as we look at this and talk about things so we can get stuff done. And we'll adjourn from there. So I would say, before we start, that if you have any specific comments, I think the best way is to comment specifically on the proposal that's in front of us, not to comment on, you know, people's intentions, not to comment on people's, you know, your perception of what they think is right or wrong, specifically not to point out certain people, to talk to the board as a whole. And to, as always, to maintain decorum and respect is really important in these deliberations. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. So that being said, I'd be happy to turn it over to Counselor Coniff.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're here to have a conversation about the proposed ordinance, City of East Hampton Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance. This ordinance has been proposed by both myself and Counselor Omar Gomez, who is here as well. This ordinance largely codifies policies and procedures already in place and in use by the East Hampton Police Department. And I am referencing Policy 8.09 of the East Hampton Police Department Manual entitled Immigration. This ordinance also aligns to the concept of community policing. According to the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, "Community policing begins with a commitment to building trust and mutual respect between police and communities. It is critical to public safety." Part of building that trust is the belief that no matter who you are or what your documentation status is, if you are a victim of or a witness to a serious crime, you can report that crime without fear that you will be investigated or deported. Without having this level of trust, cooperation with the police becomes limited, information is withheld, and criminal behavior is left unchecked. And as a result, we are all rendered less safe. Studies have shown that ordinances such as the one we are proposing tonight, at worst, have no impact on crime, or at best, lower crime rates. According to a study done by Michael Late, a criminologist at the University of Wisconsin, "The increase in undocumented immigrants over the past 30 years does not increase violence." They found a similar result with nonviolent crime. "Undocumented immigration, quote, 'did not drive up rates of drug and alcohol arrests or the number of drug overdoses and DUI deaths.'" A third study by the Cato Institute looked at the crime rates for undocumented immigrants in Texas only. Texas records records the immigration status of arrestees. Cato found, quote, "Criminal conviction and arrest rates in Texas for undocumented immigrants were lower than those of native-born Americans for murder, sexual assault, and larceny." This ordinance is designed to ensure that East Hampton remains the welcoming city it is, and all people in our community can feel safe in reporting crimes either as a victim or as a witness. The East Hampton Police Department operates this way and has operated this way for years. Counselor Gomez and I are requesting that the City of East Hampton Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance, which clearly aligns to the existing and in-force East Hampton Police Department policy and procedures, be unanimously approved by this ordinance Subcommittee. Thank you. So do you want me to kind of go by my, okay.
I think so.
So of significant importance in the ordinance are five points. And I kind of, what I want to do is I want to read the point as it is in the ordinance, and then I want to also read what is in the East Hampton Police Department Manual so that you will understand that the Police Department is behaving in this way, and they have documented in their manual the exact same points that we are making this evening. So I am not asking the East Hampton Police Department to do anything they don't already do. I'm asking to codify what we do. So under equal treatment, "East Hampton will treat all persons equally, enforce laws, and serve the public without consideration of immigration status, citizenship, immigration status, national origin, race, and ethnicity. She'll have no bearing on an individual's treatment by employees or officers of East Hampton agencies or departments." There's a lot that they speak to about this that I will read. There's many passages I could read, but I will read this one in particular. "The specific immigration status or lack thereof of an individual or group of individuals in and of itself is not and shall not be a matter of local police concern or subsequent enforcement action by the EPD unless there exists through reliable and credible information a potential threat to public safety and/or national security." The next item B, inquiries about immigration status. "City officials may not inquire about the immigration status of any member of the public with whom they have contact, including any victim, suspect, arrestee, or 911 caller, except as required to provide a public health, a public benefit." Very similar to what I just read. There is a lot more in here. I won't go into it. There's also, my next section was notwithstanding subsections A and B above, "A person's immigration status shall not prohibit or inhibit the city or any city official's participation in any government operation or program that confers an immigration benefit or temporary or permanently protects a noncitizen from removal as provided through programs such as U-VISA, the T-VISA, and Federal Violence Against Women Act." From, I'm no expert in this, but the U-VISA and those visas were put in place for the specific purpose of gaining information from people who might not otherwise provide information about crime against themselves or against others. And this is a tool that the police can use to afford them status and that they do not need to be concerned about deportation as a result of their participation. And I'll just, real quick, again, "The East Hampton Police Department recognizes that a victim's cooperation, assistance, and safety are essential to the effective detection, investigation, and prosecution of crimes. Victims who fear deportation, however, will be unlikely to come forward, cooperate, and assist in investigation efforts." They go on to explain what these visas are and how they use them to provide lawful immigration status and to protect against deportation for people who do come forward and report criminal activity. And part of their document speaks to when an investigator encounters an immigrant victim of crime who has filed a police report, and it is determined that they are willing to assist or have assisted or cooperated with the detection, investigation, or prosecution of qualifying criminal activity, they should inform them of the U-VISA application process. The next section speaks to ICE detainers and administrative warrants. "No city official may arrest or detain an individual solely on the basis of an ICE detainer or ICE administrative warrant. This prohibition includes extending the length of detention by any amount of time once an individual is released from local custody or before being transferred to court or admitted to bail." Let me find this page that this was on. Page eight. I'm almost there. Okay. So in the East Hampton Police Policies and Procedure, they have, let's see. Does this go into, this is a very large document. "In furtherance of the department's community policing philosophy and continued engagement and outreach efforts, East Hampton Police Officers shall not participate in any federal, civil, immigration-related investigations of any immigrant or foreign national, except when the immigrant or foreign national is arrested for a violent felony, has been convicted of any violent felony, is arrested for terrorism-related offenses, is arrested for trafficking of individuals, or is suspected of participating in criminal street gang activity involving violence and/or distribution of drugs." That doesn't quite go into the, sorry, guys. It is, really, seriously. All right, we'll go back to that one. It's in here. "Federal requests for information. No city official shall provide a federal officer with the following information related to a person in the custody of a city official: information about an individual's incarceration status, length of detention, home address, work address, personal information, and other than citizenship or immigration status, hearing information, or pending release, except information that is available through the Massachusetts Public Records Laws, General Records, General Laws, Chapter 66, Section 10, and General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 7, 26." Deputizing of local officials. "No city official shall perform the functions of an immigration officer whether pursuant to 8 U.S.C. Section 1357-G or any other law, regulation, or policy, whether formal or informal." And in, again, in the manual, it says, accordingly, the East Hampton Police Department, I'm sorry, "Further, the East Hampton Police Department shall not enter into any voluntary federal program that would have local officers trained and sworn to enforce federal civil immigration laws." So much of what we are asking to have codified is in the policies and procedures of the East Hampton Police Department and is documented and well-enforced by Chief Alberti. I've had many conversations with him, and he is not going to participate in any of the immigration activities from an ICE perspective. And so I don't believe that there's anything in here that is going outside the norms of what the East Hampton Police Department is already doing. So for me and for Counselor Gomez, this is codifying a policy and procedure because we know policies and procedures can change, and this is codifying it to say, we agree with you, East Hampton Police Department, this is how you should behave. So that might be it.
Okay, question. So, but beyond the East Hampton Police Department, this not only codifies what their policies are, but it extends it to other departments within the city?
Correct.
So the school department, for example, if a new student was enrolling, they wouldn't necessarily be able to say, what's your immigration status?
If there is no federal or state reason to do that, no, they can't do that.
Okay. So I'll open up to counselors now. Do you have any questions?
The only question I have, all right, bear with me.
That's fine. Taking notes and thinking at the same time.
I can't even think without taking notes. In the, and I don't know if you can answer this, because I read through the, Counselor Coniff, I read through the police policies earlier, and I agree with you that there seems to be pretty broad parallels between the policies already in place and what you and Counselor Gomez are proposing.
Mm-hmm.
I was trying to understand the S-COM biometric fingerprint submissions. Did you read this?
I did read it. What, you want me to explain it to you?
No, but it would be a question asked. So it appears that there's-
I'm going to say I can't.
Do we, do you know if we have that, or do we use that in the city?
I do not know.
Okay, so I'll save that for a question when Chief Alberti's here.
Yeah.
Because, and for the people gathered, it appears that the fingerprints of all persons arrested by state and local and agencies are basically submitted into this device, and that information is automatically shared with DHS and ICE. And so we don't really have any recourse around that.
Where, what, where is this?
That is-
It's section two.
Number two. Number two of the East Hampton Police, I mean, it's mostly, you can't stop using that. I don't really know if I'm asking a question.
And again, that's also for someone who has been arrested and is being fingerprinted.
Well, that's correct, yeah.
So that means they've done something wrong.
Right.
Which I don't think is the intent of this, is to try to protect people that have done something wrong. This is to-
Protect people who have not done-
Protect people who have not done anything wrong.
Right.
Or who have been a victim.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
That in the course of investigating them as a victim of a crime or as a reporter of a crime, if it is uncovered that they are undocumented, that that holds no bearing to the investigation of the crime.
Any other thoughts, counselors there?
What about, well, I was also reading about one versus Commonwealth, and-
That sets the guidelines or that sets the precedent for the immigration detaining and how a person, and there are people here who can explain it much better, I'm sure they will, how a person who has been detained for whatever reason cannot be kept, I believe that's the statute, they cannot be kept longer because ICE has determined that they want the local enforcement agency to hold them longer. They can't because that qualifies as an arrest, and if they have not done anything that qualifies as an arrest, I think, then they can't do that.
Well, no, I mean, they can't be further arrested.
You're asking me questions about the law that I, we need to have the chief-
That's fine, but what's important, though, is to clarify what's helping me understand this, too, is that this is for victims of crimes and reporters of crimes.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we really need the chief to explain some of the finer details.
Yeah. No problem. I did read the required reading, though.
Appreciate that.
Does he get a gold star?
He does. If he wants one, he can have one.
Okay. So at this time, I think that we would entertain people that would like to comment on what Counselor Coniff presented. Just make sure you state your name and address for the record. There is a sign-in sheet up there. So maybe once you finish speaking, just put your name and address just to make sure we get it correct.
Actually, I have, may I ask one more question?
Oh, please.
It's on, it's on the podium when you get up there.
May I ask one more question? Is there any way in which this deviates from the current, the current guidelines that the Police Department is using?
The Police Chief has not indicated that he has any concerns around anything that is different.
Okay.
Please.
Go ahead.
I was right there, and I didn't see the sign-up key. I'll try to be brief.
Sure.
Because I know this can be long and-
Oh, it's a piece of yellow paper.
Yes, that's what it is.
We're all hooked up. We're very official here.
Yeah, I like that. No seal, but that's okay. Janice Hoffman, Laurel Drive, East Hampton. Who's recording notes tonight? You're so good. I saw your eyes riveted to that screen. God bless you.
And it's also being recorded.
Oh, oh, who is recording?
The media.
Oh, how wonderful. That's grand.
They're in the back room.
All right, that's wonderful. Did you people receive my email?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you read it into the record?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We were going to let public speak, and then we were going to read those.
Okay, I'll be brief, and I'll try to be brief. This new audience, ordinance is to me sanctuary city with a new dress. And I know Ms. Coniff talked about codifying, which is put into law. There's a difference between policy and putting into code. Policy can be changed a lot easier than having a law or an ordinance put in place. I'm against the fact that this is changing. Now, by her own admission, Ms. Coniff said that this makes very little difference. If it, you did say that at the beginning of your-
There's no difference between the police and this.
No, no, what you said, that this changes, if I understood it correctly, was that if we put this in place, then will we, not necessarily less crime or more crime, it'll be more or less the same. You made some allusion to that. I, you know, but maybe we'll back over the notes, or maybe I didn't hear it correctly.
Sure.
So, you know. I think it's, the ACLU is behind all this, and they're right to be anything they want to be because they're, they've been legitimate on this country for a long, long time. I do not agree with their positions, and this particular position I don't because of what has happened to me personally. I think that this hamstring is the police and ICE. We live in a very nice, wonderful, East Hampton's a great city, and people are great. We're not immune to very bad things happening here. MS-13 can be here just like anybody else. We're right on the cusp of Springfield, and so I think we need to be aware of that. I do not make, having been a victim of a violent crime, I do not want to hamstring ICE or the police in any way, shape, or form. Doesn't mean I dislike immigrants, doesn't mean I'm not sympathetic to their cause, and I am. But I think we need to not take away powers from the police, but reaffirm what they can do to help us. And I would just want to say, the last time I was here, somebody got up from, who was in the opposing camp, and compared this, our opposition to the Holocaust and Nazis in Germany. I found that very offensive. And I think people were offended in the room. She seemed very bright, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, and she seemed like an educated, well-spoken person. She shamed herself, she shamed the Jews, she shamed everybody that's connected with the Holocaust. I hope nobody ever uses that kind of rhetoric here again. We can agree to disagree, speak to the issues. So I hope that we will all just try to be decent to one another. I mean, you may not like what I say, I don't like what you say, but I don't have to tell your mother wears army boots, you know? So, I mean, so I just hope that you would reconsider. I do not want this ordinance made into an ordinance. Policy takes care of policy. A policy can change very quickly, easily. Ordinance is another animal. I do not want to see it codified or put into an ordinance form. So thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue?
I just have one question.
If you wouldn't mind.
Very simple question.
No problem.
It must be simple because I don't understand.
Okay. So just state your name and address.
Name is Don Michaud, address 24 Pine Brook Drive. If the ordinance pretty well lines up with the police manual, what is the ulterior motive to put an ordinance in place?
Would you like to feel about it?
Sure, I, well, I have no ulterior motive.
We already have what's in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, in place.
Right, but ulterior motives looks as though I'm trying to gain something beyond what I'm-
I personally think you or somebody is.
Okay, well, that's your opinion. What I'm looking to do, because to Ms. Hoffman's statement, policies and procedures can change if we get a new police chief or whatever, and I think this is important enough that we make it rule of law.
And I can expand on that, and I think that one of the things that potentially is a driver of this is to expand beyond just the Police Department policy, that it would apply to other city departments as well that might not have a written policy.
And what other doors will that open in the future, or possibly open in the future, to further push towards being a sanctuary city?
I don't necessarily-
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking to, really, the impetus for this is to allow people to come forward with reporting of crimes that have happened to themselves.
You have that now.
I don't believe that the community believes that that is, that there's that much trust between the police and the community.
There's probably just as many people in the community that don't believe there is no ulterior motive to do this.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
So I'm going to, just for, as a point of order, I'm going to, what we'll do is, if you want to make a comment, we'll just let you make your comment, and then we'll respond to it after, as opposed to having back and forth.
Okay.
So we'll just go from there. So anybody else like to come up and take a shot?
Okay, Ami Ross, 28 Oliver Street. Sorry if I go on stream of consciousness a little bit. So I feel this ordinance is very clear and makes impact in words and actions, and does not cost money. Also, it reflects very much part of who East Hampton is and wants to be, which is an accountable community to all people regardless of their status in life. If we are saying that we can't be accountable on paper and write this ordinance into our charter, but we can be in our words, then I feel like there is a falseness and this hugely lacking of accountability and follow-through, and it's really problematic for me. Just because a leader of our federal government nation does not respect the paper written on and words spoken upon the Bill of Rights does not mean we don't need to do and be better. Quite contrary, I say. Who are we as a community if the most vulnerable people in our community cannot step to a city department and handle the business needs with integrity and reassurances, written and spoken? Not bringing this ordinance into our charter, I feel, would be a huge misstep and contradiction, not only an injustice in the word democracy, which we are veering away from and leaning in towards forces that would rather see us divided rather than united, to say the least. Please support unanimously this civil right, this human right, which allows a person to be a person and not a target. The vulnerable population and individuals needing protection and advocacy do not need further aggro and stress and further unsafety and not being able to take care of their business to take care of themselves and family. This ordinance makes real steps in community relations towards being an overall safer and more interdependent community of nations, of families, rather than continue to further distrust and harm to folk who seek to better it. If we're saying it should not, and that's where I end. So I advocate wholeheartedly because as someone who's an outsider and marginalized, everybody wants to be able to, like, take care of their business and step to, and not be othered and be judged on their merits, not the color of their skin or their status or limbs or creed or any of that, that it's just, I'm here to do business with this department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else would like to come up?
I'll be the shortest, and that's St. Elmother Street. I'm here to just say I'm totally in favor of this, and I please pass it. I support this ordinance. I don't think it's going to make us a sanctuary city, it's just going to be making sure everyone feels very welcome here. Sorry, I'm writing. Thank you.
Jim Valencourt, 15 Cottage Street. I like this. We've talked about this before, probably a year ago, maybe a little bit more than that, about doing something to help ease the anxiety of people who might be in this community. community, whether legally or illegally, with some sort of immigration status that's up in the air because the powers that be can't get their stuff together. I think, living on the East Coast especially, we don't always see the turmoil that our government causes in Central America as well as other countries. We feel pretty safe and secure in the fact that our democracy treats everybody fairly when in fact it does not. And people coming to this country for asylum, I don't think should be persecuted because they're trying to save the lives of themselves and their children. Since this ordinance does not prevent our police from doing anything that they're not already doing, I think that what it does help to do is ensure that they cannot be used by a federal agency and manipulated to do things that we don't necessarily want them doing to our citizens. And especially since they won't pay for it.
Anybody else like to comment?
I can't write and talk at this size. My name is Andrea Stone and I live at 4 Crescent Street. I'm also a member of the East Hampton Community Coalition. It's actually been, I think, about two years since a proposal was made to incorporate these ideas in making East Hampton a safe city for everyone. I'd like to thank Councillors Coniff and Gomez for bringing this well-written and comprehensive ordinance to the council. You can convey my thanks to the entire city council for allowing it to come to ordinance so it can finally be discussed. In all these two years, that actually has not happened. I'm sorry. So I'm, I wanna thank Councillors Coniff and Gomez, as well as the city council, for getting this ordinance to the committee so it can finally be discussed. Okay, I'm skipping a lot. One of the things that did come up in the discussions last year was whether or not this really is a problem for East Hampton. And this is a problem everywhere. East Hampton is not immune. The issues of the anti-Semitic graffiti aren't exactly related to this, except that it shows that there is feelings in this community that may be discriminatory and behavior that is very disturbing to a lot of people. There, there are people who live and work here who do not have immigration paperwork that would meet everyone's standards and they're invisible. So I think that the thought that this isn't a problem in East Hampton, we don't know how much because these are people who maybe aren't coming up to the police and aren't doing those things. I'm very aware of Chief Alberti's position. He's been very clear and the practice that is actually being done by the East Hampton Police Department. But I agree with you that a written policy is not the same as an ordinance. And I also, you know, point out that Chief Alberti may not be the chief forever. He may wanna retire. And I would like to know that with his change and the changeover within the police, we would still have the protections offered in your ordinance. And just finally, this will help East Hampton be the city we would like it to be, that everyone feels comfortable working here and coming here. So thank you guys very much and thank you for giving it the time today.
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, 143 Main Street. Main Street? Thank you. So I, I support the ordinance and have been following along the past two years. And at times it has been very difficult conversation and so this feels different. Both just so much work being put into the ordinance by Councillors Coniff and Gomez and showing how it aligns with the current policy and practice. And I mean, even how we're talking to each other today and trying to listen to each other. So it feels very different. So I appreciate that. And I very much, I feel there is a need for an ordinance as opposed to policy because I think it is important, if we're going to be a welcoming city, to have it be our policy at the highest level and that, that message is then communicated, that, that we could pass this kind of ordinance that supports community policing and people can hear that as a message. Part of the two-years process has been maybe some things were gonna happen on the state level. The LUN decision, I can't exactly speak to that, but that did, the, responding to ICE detainers was not something that was aligned with the Massachusetts Constitution. So there was the idea of like some things would happen at the state level, but that's been taking a long time and it's not happening. So it's great that we're doing it here to say this is what we want in our community, to welcome all people and to make sure that they are protected. And so thank you. Thank you for your work.
Donald Torrey from 17 School Street, and I'm opposed to this ordinance. I don't understand how undocumented aliens can work in the town. Employers need to have insurance on everyone. What if one of them gets hurt? Are they gonna go to the police? They'll lose their job. So it's really not gonna open it up for them to go to the police. They're not paying any taxes, they're probably getting substandard pay. I, I just don't see that what you're doing is gonna change anything as to how the chief of police feels about things. And you people may all be replaced. So you'll put an ordinance in that somebody coming in may not like. I think we're covered as far as the police is concerned and that's the big deal, so. And as far as employers, they're committing crimes. And I don't know of any undocumented aliens working in East Hampton, but if there are, the employer should be arrested for breaking laws. They're not having workman's comp, they're not paying any insurances, and I'm just opposed to it.
My name is Steve Natupski from 18 Mineral Street. I have a little cold, but I'm glad I had to be at this meeting. I felt my duty to be at this meeting. You have eleven conditions in your ordinance in, in, in race, color, religious creed, age, familial status, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression. There, there's a lot of issues there, but everybody's talking about one thing, the, the immigration status. And like this is trying to ram this like Sanctuary City down our throat again. I, I don't think this is a good idea. I think that, that, that East Hampton doesn't have to be branded with an ordinance. The police already have an identical or almost identical agenda as to what has to be done to keep our city safe and for it to be fair for all our citizens, no, no matter who they are. And, and like an ordinance like this is just putting a, a scar on our city. Thank you.
So I'm happy to entertain any other people that'd like to come up and speak if...
Mary Ellen Deluzio, 18 Mineral Street. I had, also, I can ask questions as well besides making, because there was just one thing I was, a couple of things I was unclear about.
Sure.
The reporting requirements, section 13-3, why do you think this is necessary?
Why do I think it's necessary? I think it's important for us to understand how many requests the police are getting.
Why? I mean, it's never done, been asked before, now we're gonna burden the police with having to generate another report?
Well, the police chief has not indicated to me this would be a burden. So all of this is, you know, part of the conversation we're gonna be having, both as a, as an ordinance committee and with additional people who want to walk through this. That is an area that the, the chief has not actually even mentioned to me as, because he and I have talked. He did not indicate that he had any problems with that particular part of the ordinance, so.
So if this is gonna be part of the continuing conversation, does that mean that the ordinance still might change a little bit? I don't know what you mean by continuing conversation.
Well, the three of us will have conversations and, and my fellow councillors here may request some wording changes and some changes to it and I don't know what those might be yet. We haven't debated about it.
The only thing I would say in that section, if we are gonna be doing reporting and asking the police, I would like to keep track of how many crimes have been committed by illegal aliens in the city. I think that would be an important statistic to review and now, earlier, which reminds me, earlier in your statement when you were talking about Texas and the Cato Institute saying that the percentage of crimes committed by undocumented or illegal aliens is lower than in, by American citizens. Well, I, I think the reporting process isn't entirely accurate and I don't think there's a requirement, much of a requirement, especially in the past administration, to keep track of those statistics. But I do know in Texas, over 600,000 crimes have been committed by illegal aliens and that's an awful lot. So I just wanted to comment on that. I, I do think that it's not necessary to codify this ordinance. The police, we, are already in effect doing it. And you can see over time, policing policies have changed, they evolve. If we put this into an ordinance, that's gonna be impossible. It's an ordinance, it's a law, there's no change, there's no variation there. And so I, I don't think it needs to be codified, we already, in fact, are doing this. The, I, I definitely, you know, support not discriminating against people, no matter what their creed, sexual orientation, all that as well. I mean, but those are protected by law already. So I don't also see us putting us in this position of having a welcoming ordinance, which mainly to me is the thrust is protecting illegal aliens and, and get, affording them the rights of American citizens. To me, that's not a black and white issue. We're going into a gray area with that kind of supporting ordinance. And I don't think it's anything we really wanna support as a city. As a matter of fact, I was wondering if you got the city solicitor's opinion on this ordinance and whether or not it would be legal by our, by our ordinance as already.
So part of the vetting process is that, you know, as we move through this, we would ask for an opinion from the city attorney?
I think that would be wise. I think that'd be part of the due diligence is to make sure we're in line with that because I know our last city solicitor did not feel this kind of ordinance was in line with our charter. We did have an outside attorney disagree with that, but I feel as a council member, we would be, it would be important to go along with what our city solicitor determines is appropriate for liability purposes. Every so-called welcoming sanctuary, last Sanctuary City, has lawsuits against us, against them. There's hundreds and hundreds working their way through the courts now. I don't think East Hampton needs to put itself in that kind of position.
Before you go, I just have a quick question. You mentioned that there was, in Texas, there was 600,000. Do you have, do you have a source for that?
I have a source, yes, um, you know, I'm gonna have to...
And I'd be happy if you could just email it.
I, I believe it was the Center for Immigration Studies. But I can get, get back to you on that if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And of course, in, in, in the federal and state prison systems, the population of illegal aliens is much higher percent than American citizens. So even though illegal aliens are a small percentage of our population, they represent a much larger position, you know, in our prison systems, state and federal. I personally think we should cooperate with ICE whenever they ask for it, especially, you know, if they ask us to detain someone, even though it, by whatever regulation it is, and again, I'm not a lawyer and I don't know all the proceedings, procedures, but if they're asking you to hold someone a couple more hours because they have a warrant or detention or whatever it is, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. I, I, I think there's a reason why they ask people to do that and I would like us to cooperate with ICE.
I can tell you, well, we won't go into it.
Yeah.
I don't mind. You can tell me.
No, but it's public speaker. Yeah, public speak.
Well, I mean, you can educate me.
Well, we can maybe discuss it once.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And if there's nobody else, we do have a couple of pieces of correspondence to read too, so feel free.
Hi there. My name is Jean Francis and I live at 15 Cottage Street. And I have been part of trying to get this as an, present it as an ordinance for the last couple of years. And I know that tonight we have several lots of opposing views. But in the beginning, when we were collecting signatures to get it even presented to the city council, and I stood in front of the Big East many mornings with another person in our group, and everybody, maybe two or three, would not sign it. But every time that I said we would like East Hampton to be a safe city, welcoming to everyone, everybody signed it with no hesitation. So I think even though we've got people here tonight that are very opposed to it, I think the majority of people in East Hampton are very much in support of us being a safe city for everyone and having it codified. So thank you very much, Councillor Coniff and Councillor Gomez for doing this. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
And the pen is gone. Thank you.
Donald Torrey. She also submitted a petition, and I had submitted a petition. I think I had four or 500 signatures opposed to Sanctuary City. I don't know if you have a record of that?
We, we do have.
Do you know how many that was?
I don't remember how many. I don't remember how many certified signatures there were.
Thank you.
So I think unless anybody else has a comment, we can read the pieces of correspondence that... Feel free.
Mary Ellen Deluzio, 18 Mineral Street again. I appreciate your, your observations there, but my observations would be the exact opposite. So most of the people I know in East Hampton would not support this ordinance and we did collect a lot of signatures for it. And you, I think most of you were here two years ago, you saw how it divided the city. It's still there. There's a lot of people who are even afraid to come here tonight and voice their opinions because of the tension around this issue and the fact that the opposite opinion is not welcomed at all. So that's my observation and experience. Thank you.
And I think a point of clarification is, this proposal is quite a bit different than the proposal that was in front of us two years ago. So this, this is a very different animal I would, I would submit. So drawing links between the two is similar to drawing links between... So, drawing links between the two is similar to drawing links between, you know, very different things. And if you would like to speak again, I'm happy to.
No, I just wanna ask, 'cause the city solicitor looked at this document.
So, that question was asked, and part of the process of vetting an ordinance is to have the city solicitor review it.
What was the opinion of the...
It has not happened yet, we have not...
Hasn't looked at it yet?
So, if you do wanna ask questions, then please come up to the podium.
I'm sorry. I don't wanna make this longer than it has to be every department time, we're working all day.
So, let me just, because I know where you're going. We typically do not give the un, the draft version to the lawyers, because we don't wanna have to pay them four times every time we change it.
I understand that, but don't we give somebody on staff?
Oh, yeah, what I'm saying is, we don't have a final version to give a lawyer yet, we're still debating it. Once we have the final version, we will hand it over to the lawyers for them to vet.
And what do you see as changes in this?
Wording.
In what way? Where it's a power...
Well, we don't actually know yet.
We haven't debated it.
For example, if I said, "I don't like the word scheduled, I wanna change that to, you know, something else", that's the type of thing that would happen out here.
Yeah, but I...
And just, you know, material changes to this that would take it beyond the scope of what we have in front of us, would not, you know, we have to keep it within the scope of what we have, because that's what we've advertised.
Well, I don't know your rules and procedures, so you'll have to go in my ignorance. But when you formulate these ordinances or proposed ordinance, is the solicitor work with you cooperatively to get the document done?
Last step.
I think, may I respectfully suggest that you change that? That instead of getting to this juncture where we're all like this on you guys, that the solicitor comes in at the initial stage and threw out? Because that person will be able to get the landmines out of the way? And you get the document that will be worthy of what you want it to be? Instead of at the last, at the 11th hour? That's a little bushly, I tell you, a little bushly.
It's not at the 11th hour, it's once we've done our final deliberations. And I do wanna just, you know, state that currently, the charges that we incur for using the city solicitor are $75 for every five minutes.
Everybody knows that.
Right, so...
Everybody knows that.
So, that's why, you know, we don't necessarily need...
That's a foolish economy. That's, I don't wanna pay lawyers, I know it's portal to portal, I know, I've had many dealings with, like we all have with lawyers. But I think in this particular, you have to cast your bread upon the waters. Have to spend the time to get a lawyer, work in concert with you guys. Because I don't, you guys are just folks like us, and you don't know the law. Spend the money. I know you're gonna, you know, I know you wanna be fiscally responsible. But the end, if you finally get a document that has been vetted by an attorney, that when you get to the very last juncture and you say, "I'm very happy with this document, this has done everything it's supposed to do for us and the points that we wanted to make", and you don't go at the very last hour and say, "Well, just let's end looking, just because we wanna save a few bucks", I know it's more than a few bucks, but this is an important thing. You know, I moved to this city about 13 years ago, and I was thrilled, because I love this city and I love the people here. And it reminded me of my old community that I lived in, 1955, which is a very happy, sweet time. This city has to step up to the 21st century. Roads, everything else that we do is kind of a little antiquated. You're riding around in a tin Lizzie when you should be riding around in a Lamborghini. And when I'm talking about, I'm not spending, I don't mean being foolish with money, I know you're not. But I mean, you know, let's put some money, put your money where your mouth is. And get the lawyer and right with you, he'll help you, so you're not banging each other's heads. And you get somebody else who knows what they're doing. I don't know, you know, so, but just a suggestion, call the lawyer.
Okay, noted, noted. Okay. I think what we'll do is, we'll read the two pieces of correspondence into the record, and then we'll continue on here, if that pleases the clerk. I serve at the pleasure of the chairman. All right. Want me to read them? Okay. So, our first piece is from Janice Hoffman, who's in attendance tonight. Okay, sorry, just, members of the city, members of the city council of East Hampton, Massachusetts, citizens of the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, "I am writing in opposition to the proposed welcoming community trust ordinance in East Hampton, Mass. In December 2013, my husband, Charles Hoffman, was killed in a head-on collision on Hendrick Street, along with the three-year-old daughter of the illegal alien from Guatemala who was driving an unregistered, uninsured vehicle. I was also severely injured. This individual is very intoxicated, he did not have a license to drive, this is a very personal issue for me. If this man had been picked up and deported, I would still have my husband. The title of this ordinance belies what its proponents hope to see implemented. Yes, it's not a Sanctuary City proposal, however, the devil's in the details. Ordering law enforcement to stand down is not the answer. Implementing this city ordinance, this ordinance, sorry, would only further complicate an almost inscrutable situation. The problem of immigration is due to the long years of neglect by the United States Congress, presidents, and judges to deal with this terrible situation. That being said, this proposed ordinance will complicate the issue further. Unfortunately, we live in an age when everyone is demonized. Whatever position one takes, they're shamed by the other side. Civil discourse is no longer practiced in America, I hope that all sides will engage in a reasonable manner. I suggest that the citizens of East Hampton and elsewhere begin to make their voices heard to the members of Congress, the president, and all their elected officials, starting with the East Hampton City Council. They are our employees. Whatever side you are on, write, call, email, or text, nothing could change for me and all the widows, widowers, mothers, and fathers who have lost loved ones. When the government hears the strong voice of the people, things will change, Janice Hoffman." Sorry for your loss. Sorry for your loss. And we have another letter here from Laurel Gardner, who was here earlier but had to leave. "Members of the ordinance committee, thank you for considering the welcoming community trust ordinance. I hope that you will decide unanimously to send this on to the city council for it to become part of East Hampton law. Yes, this city is mayor strong, but the wording of this ordinance has been carefully constructed to be well within the rights of our counselors as legislators. I am pleased that the ordinance codifies the current exemplary practices of the police force. Also, if passed, this would be a strong reminder that the residents of East Hampton have chosen to live in a city that publicly invites all who live here to take part in civic participation, regardless of current citizenship status. Please remember, it is not a crime to live here without being a U.S. citizen, nor is it unusual for people to take their time in applying for citizenship. To be succinct, I will add just one anecdote. Another woman and I canvassed my Plain Street neighborhood in February of 2017, asking for signatures for a similar but less polished ordinance request. This was during a time when many people were fearful that the federal government would punish our city financially if we passed such an ordinance. Of the houses we approached where people were home, four declined to sign, three agreed to look over our literature and consider it, and 12 signed on with enthusiasm. This is obviously statistically insignificant, but on that day, I felt, I felt hope that so many people I hardly knew agree with me that East Hampton should take this measure. I felt more pride in living here. Please do recommend that the city council adopt the welcoming trust ordinance, it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Laurel Gardner, 13 Plain Street." Okay. So, I think I'll just, one last opportunity, if anybody has anything to say. Don, and then David? And then what we'll do is, we'll close and we'll have some discussion.
Donald Torrey again, can you just put this on the ballot? I mean, or if you pass it, can it be put on the ballot to repeal it?
I believe it can be.
You know, I mean...
I believe that there is a repeal process.
It solved a problem once and for all, I mean, this is crazy, I've been up here for a bunch of meetings, and there's this side and that side. City council can put it on the ballot, correct? With the mayor?
I think, yeah, I'm not sure we could just wave a wand and put it on the ballot, that might be a process.
I know I could put it on with 150 signatures. But I think it's easier for the council and the mayor to put it on.
Well, thank you.
David Gardner, 13 Plain Street. So, I don't know a lot about this ordinance, all the details, that seems to be what's being discussed. Trying to hammer out, you know, the words. But what I, one thing I did hear tonight, and I heard it on previous nights, is the fear, people who are opposed to it, the fear of showing up here and expressing their mind. They're fearful that somebody might criticize them for being insensitive, perhaps, or whatever it is. I think about, one of the things that an ordinance like this would accomplish, and that is, we have people who live in the community, obviously, who maybe aren't documented, living under the radar. They're not committing any crimes, they draw no attention whatsoever. But if a crime were committed against them, they would be fearful of coming forward and just saying, going to the police and saying, you know, "This crime was committed against me". That would be a brave person to actually go and, you know, undocumented, to report a crime committed against them, because we don't have any assurance that anything would ever protect them. And I know that the police department, right now, their policy is not to question somebody's legal status in the country. But that is not assured into the future. If it's the policy, as I heard last time, that it's the policy of the police department, so what's the big deal? Why put it in writing? As a businessman, every time I make a deal with somebody, we put it in writing. If I can say it, why not put it in writing? You know, I don't question, in that environment, that somebody's not trusting me to keep my word. We put it in writing, there it is, in perpetuity, whatever happens.
Because the difference is law.
Okay, so, we're not gonna have any back and forth?
So, well, so, yeah, so people are living here, you know, I have to say, I'm, I've had encounters with police, I have never once been asked for my papers. It's always assumed that I'm a legal citizen, nobody's asked me, at all, ever. I think that this ordinance, another thing that it can accomplish is that people who look like they might not fit in here, that might not be citizens, would be asked for their documents, perhaps. You know, and if somebody asks me for my papers and proof of citizenship, what am I, I don't have anything here, nothing at all. Could be taken to the police station, questioned, but nobody asks me because I'm a white male, you know, middle-aged, and I look like I fit in here. And so, I, just for various other reasons, I feel like this ordinance, something like this, is very important to have in place, so people can live here in peace. If they commit a crime, obviously, like anybody else, they would be taken to the police station, they would be questioned. If they're not documented, well, then they'll be found out as being undocumented. In the meantime, what difference does it make if they're not documented, they're not citizens? As was pointed out, some people are here and they're now waiting, because of the current administration at federal level, they're waiting for the opportunity to become citizens. It's been on hold, there are all kinds of things in the way, they can't quite do it. How do you, how do you rectify that? How can you possibly rectify that? I don't know how many of you folks in the room here are undocumented, or have some kind of, something wrong with their papers or citizenship, or something that could have them carted out of here if ICE showed up and demanded that everybody show them their documents. And I just think, an ordinance like this is just a sane, it just makes so much sense. You know, so people can actually have the opportunity to live in East Hampton without the fear of, well, actually, not fearing reporting crime, I mean, we talked about crime, you know? And I know the statistics, I don't, you know, it's nothing you have to make up. It is the federal statistics, you can look across the board anywhere. Crime among undocumented people in this country is lower than crime committed by people who are citizens of this country. More crimes are committed against them because people know that they would be afraid to report it, because they're undocumented, they're taken advantage of all the time. So, this has to be, you know, this is pretty simple. That's it, that's all I have to contribute.
Okay. So, I think that at this time, we can close the public input and start deliberating. Do we, I'll agree that that's the direction we wanna go?
Yeah.
I think that's appropriate, as long as someone else wants to speak. Okay, and so, I just wanna, before we start talking about the ordinance specifically, so, public speak is over, and, you know, I wanna clarify just a couple of things before we move on. So, one, during the comments, it was talked that, you know, adding this ordinance to our charter, this would not be a revision of our charter in any way, this would just be in addition to the ordinance, the ordinances of the city of East Hampton. And ordinances, yes, are more codified than policy. However, ordinances can be changed. I've been the chair of ordinance subcommittee for, I've been on the ordinance subcommittee for 16 years, and I've seen quite a few ordinances have to be augmented and changed. So, it is by no means permanent. And some people were kind of alluding to the fact that an ordinance is permanent. It is not, it can be changed by a majority of the city council. And I think that another thing that I just wanted to speak to, and I think this goes to what Counselor Coniff said, you know, someone made a comment of hamstringing the police department. I just wanna be really clear, this document mirrors the police department policy. This would not be asking them to do anything that they don't currently do, other than their reporting. So, I don't see this as any hamstringing necessarily, I just wanna make sure, clarify that.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's the only clarifications I wanted to kind of make before we move forward. So, I'd be happy to, Counselor Coniff, is there any other things you wanted to discuss before we moved forward?
No, no, you know, I think for me, all of this is really beginning, middle, and end around creating safety and creating an environment where all people in this community can feel like they can report crime, if they witness it or are a victim of it, and not feel as though the ramifications of reporting that are deportation. And because if that's what we believe that would happen, they won't report it. And if they're not gonna report a criminal, then the next person who may be injured by that person could be one of us. And it could be our neighbor, it could be anybody. So, I don't see how that makes us any more safe to create an environment where people are not free to say, "Hey, somebody just broke into my house and killed my dog", and we're not gonna say anything because we don't feel like we're gonna be treated well. And that really is my motivation around this, is that I want us, I want everybody to feel safe, like they can report, whatever, so...
Counselor Gomez, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yes. Thank you, Counsel Derby. A few things. First, I hear a few people here tonight saying that most of the opposed group is not, they're not here because they're afraid. They're citizens of the United States, they are from here. Sure, they are, they are from here, and they are afraid. They have papers, and they are afraid. Can you imagine to those that don't have papers, to those that are undocumented, how afraid they are when they have to call the police and report a crime? I'm with Counselor Coniff. What we're trying to do here is basically to protect everybody here. We are not, are bringing this to cover people that are making crimes or criminals. That's not our purpose, it's the other way. We are not doing anything different than we're doing today. 100% that what we're doing is the right thing to do, because tomorrow, the police chief can change... 100% that what we're doing is the right thing to do because tomorrow, the police chief can change the policy. But he cannot change the ordinance. Definitely, it's processed that we can change ordinance anytime. But every time that we change the ordinance, the constituents go, going to know. With the change of policy, no one's going to know, and they can change it anytime. We have to be brave to talk. And I can talk by me personally. I'm a citizen of the United States. Puerto Rico is part of the United States. And I'm being called immigrant in this council. And I'm not. In this city, we are open three new Mexican restaurants. And because I'm Puerto Rican, they told me, oh, good for you. And that's not right. And I'm a citizen of the United States. So can you imagine how afraid is those who doesn't have papers? Again, how bad they, people can treat them because they don't have papers? And I just, I feel so sorry what happened to you.
If you feel sorry, do something about it.
So let's, let's.
I feel so sorry what happened to you. But violence is not the same thing as accident. It's two different things. I feel so bad what happened.
It was violent.
But that's it, the definition of, of those two things are really different. We are not here to bring any more violence in this city. This is not what we're looking for. I want everybody to read the ordinance that we're proposing and read the policies too. And we're not trying to do anything to change the city. This is a great city. I'm proud to live here, and I want to keep living here. And I want everybody feel welcome in the, the same way that I'm feel welcome in here. That's what we want. That's it.
Councillors, Eric, do you have any?
Well, first of all, I, I just want to thank everyone who spoke today for some really wonderful civil discourse. I mean, I think that we, we all know how this has been an ongoing discussion, that to some degree, people have referenced what came before this. And I'm not necessarily drawing parallels between the current, the language we have and the language that came before. But what I am seeing is concerned citizens voicing their opinions in a civil manner. And I really think that everyone deserves, I'm not asking you to give a round of applause, I'm just prefacing this. Everyone deserves a virtual round of applause for that. I've read through this a couple of times. I've read through the police policies. I want to, now hearing what everyone said tonight, I want to be able to, to read through this more before I make any in-depth comments. I will say that I agree with the sentiment here, from, from what I'm hearing, that this protects victims. And that in certain ways, at least just from a cursory listening to of what's been presented tonight, that it does insert, one can claim in certain ways that it makes our, it makes our community safer because it allows people to, it allows everybody to come forward to report crimes, whereas they might otherwise be hesitant to do so. I do wonder, and I'd like to get more feedback from the authors of this, that, you know, I hear some fear in this room, and most of the comments around that are by perpetrators of crimes. And we're not seeking to protect perpetrators of crimes or violent crimes. And in regards to the parallels with the police policies, it's specific. Section five, there's these, as councillor Coniff, I think, read off, violent felonies are not, should not be construed as being under the protection that, that, correct? Under the protection that we're, that we're suggesting should be given to, to victims and to, and to reporters. And the question is, do we need to also include, while it's implicit, I think in, in the language here, is there any merit to at least giving some, for lack of a better term, lip service to that? Just so people understand better when they do read the language, that in no way are, do we feel that people who commit violent crimes are in the same category as the, the individuals that we're talking about here. So that's just, you know, that's something I would like to deliberate on further. One thing I really like, a question was raised by an audience member. One thing I actually really like is the reporting requirements because a lot of statistics have been thrown around tonight. And what better way to be able to acquire real-time data than to actually require reporting? And I think that it's, it's, you know, things like the, sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit here. But things like this, the, the Cato Institute study, I think that that's potentially valuable, as are some of the statistics that were, that were cited by members of the audience, potentially, as to the number of crimes committed by undocumented people in the United States. That's those, on both sides, that type of data is, is constantly used. And by actually acquiring our own and analyzing it, we can, we can help actually contribute to the answers around this instead of just kind of speaking through personal experience and an anecdote. So I like that idea. Other than that, again, I feel like I, I need to sit with this to, before coming forward with any more suggestions. But I do appreciate my colleagues putting this forward, and I appreciate all the comments tonight. And I think that, you know, on, on both sides, you know, it, it's given me food for thought. And I think, I'm not suggesting this, by the way, but I think Mr. Torrey raised a good point too. Is this something that should be put before a ballot question? I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that that's an, that's an interesting idea. It, it allows for more participation. So I'm just kind of spit firing here, obviously, as you can see, and I will stop in about 10 seconds. But again, thank you, everyone, for coming out, participating. Thank you, councillors Coniff and Gomez, for contributing this. I, I do think, I do like the sentiment. I do like some of the things that are in here. I want a, a chance to read more.
Clarification. So you, you mentioned section five and violent crime. I, I think that if, as I, maybe this is just a clarification for me, and maybe either of you can, but it seems like the S-COM, the fingerprint submissions, like anybody that's arrested for any crime, they fingerprint. And that gets, so it doesn't matter whether it's violent or, it seems like any crime, they are taking the fingerprints and, and, am I, am I, did I misinterpret that?
Well, that's something I want to ask the chief because we're trying to determine if, if there's, you know, different, different levels where if someone's, if someone's detained for jaywalking, you know, is, is, there's some discussion in here about what constitutes arrest and further, and, and unlawful detainment. And, and I need to understand better from the chief, kind of, the different levels of, the kind of the different, the different levels of breaking the law, et cetera.
Okay. I mean, because under the S-COM, in the policy, it says, "The fingerprints of all persons arrested by state and local law enforcement agencies in which those agencies routinely submit these electronic biometric prints to the FBI for criminal justice database checks are also automatically shared with the Department of Homeland Security." So that, I mean, that to me sounds like anybody that's arrested.
That's what it sounds like to me as well. That's what I was asking earlier.
Okay. So.
But again, we're not.
I have not had a chance to talk to the chief about that particular.
Okay. And that's not addressed? I mean, that, that, so there's nothing in the ordinance that would keep that from?
No, no. We're not going to tell them not to do that.
I don't know if we.
Care to, yeah.
Well, nor do we want to.
Right. Okay. So it sounds like you would want more time to review this and, and take a look, maybe ask some questions of the chief. I think it would be great if we had him here. I'm, I'm not against that. Do you have any objections to continuing?
No, no.
You know, I think for me, personally, I'm, I'm in favor of this. And it's, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and, and saying their thing. I just have different experiences. You know, as a teacher, having quite a few students that are undocumented students. And, and knowing that, you know, some of my students who 15 years old, you know, escaping violence, you know, I had a student who was stabbed in the stomach, and his mom put him on a train. And he made his way here by himself. And that was a pretty harrowing journey for him. And I'm not going to say that he probably wasn't pretty severely affected by that. But he also works every day until midnight, and he's working to pay an immigration lawyer so he can become a citizen. And so these are kind of the stories that you don't necessarily hear about every day. And I see him walking on the street in East Hampton as he's trying to wait for a ride to get to the job that he works at. And so I think it's, you know, my experience is a little different than maybe people that haven't had a lot of contact with people that don't have immigration status or have never had to worry about that. And, and I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of good questions that were raised. I think, you know, holding employers accountable for the people that they hire. You know, I think that, you know, if you, if you eat meat, you're complicit. If you've ever had bacon, you're complicit because Smithfield makes a habit, which is the biggest hog producer in, in the world, they make a habit of importing illegal workers and then having a quota of how many of them get arrested each day. And the, and they get off completely scot-free. If you don't believe me, look it up. And, 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 you know, so I think that if, if you really are concerned about illegal immigration, don't eat bacon.
Yeah.
So I'll just say that straight up. And councillor Gomez.
Just for clarification, I don't, I just want to be clear, the, these ordinance don't pretend to talk to the owner business in East Hampton to hire undocumented people.
No.
This is not the purpose of the order.
Absolutely not.
Just want to be that clear.
And I wasn't trying to, it was brought up during the speak. And, and oftentimes, and what I was, I guess, through my long-winded story, I was trying to say that it's not, oftentimes, it's the, the workers that are, the ones that are put at risk, and the, and the owners are the ones that get away scot-free. And, and so, you know, I, I'm happy to entertain this, to do our due diligence. I'm definitely going to have the city attorney review this as we move forward into this. And, you know, and I think that what we'll do is, we'll set another meeting specifically for this topic. And we'll try to have it up here and.
Try to have the chief, make sure the chief can.
And we'll make sure that the chief can be here as well, so if there are any other questions. And, you know, so I just want to be, and I, and I do encourage everybody to read this in detail so you know exactly what it does and what it doesn't do. I, I think that's important for, you know, as the process unfolds.
I mean, I, I guess also that it's important to, I don't know if we can make it as a supplemental, supplemental material to this meeting, also specifically the police procedures? I mean, I know it's public record anyways, but could we also upload that as part of ordinance, as part of our materials?
I think that's, I think that's something we could ask Barbara to, to do. I mean, it's part of our public record unless the chief, chief has any aversion, but I don't think.
Yeah, I think we should check.
Yeah.
Well.
Yep. And do we want to, do you guys want to look at setting a date for this now?
Yep.
Well, we have.
We have our, let me see, I'm in the wrong month, so that's probably, so.
So we have a meeting on the 26th already, correct?
Yes. So we should, and that, we should, we have a lot of other stuff on, so maybe we should do after that.
On the, so the 26th, we have a meeting?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, do.
It's a Tuesday.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else?
I, um.
No, I mean, if you want, we can just do that meeting.
Wait, wait, wait.
Do you want to use the 26th for this?
We might, because the following Tuesday, I'm out of town for business.
I mean, I would, I would say that, and I, and I don't, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the other, any other items on our agenda right now are not, as, I mean, this warrants a very thorough and engaged vetting and community discussion. And I don't think there's anything else on the agenda right now that takes as much precedent as this, but I might, I don't think there is, is there?
No.
No. Now, that meeting was set for 5:15. Do we still want to look at doing 5:15?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Or we could do the rest of our business at 5:15, and if people want to come here, it's okay.
We could do that too?
I would, I have to be somewhere at 7, but I would certainly.
So that would give 45.
Well, but I don't think that.
We'll go 5:15.
We'll go, yeah.
Yeah, let's just go 5:15, I mean, it's safe.
Yeah.
Okay. So just so everybody knows, the next ordinance subcommittee meeting will be the 26th of March at 5:15.
5:15 or 5:10?
5:15.
1:05.
1:05.
Thank you.
And this, this was a, this was a meeting that's been set, this is our standard meeting time, and we're just using it to be efficient.
Do you know what room that, we don't know where.
We're going to try to be up here if we can.
Well, chairman, do you think that we could discuss, maybe briefly discuss some of our agenda items at first, but try to limit that to say 20 minutes of people who are coming from their jobs, so I feel like I get here for like 5:30, 5:45? Well, we could open the meeting at 5:15, but we'll, we'll plan to, to.
On the agenda, this could be one of the last things.
Yeah. Right, we could have a cursory discussion of the other stuff, so that people who may not be able to get here to 5:15, you know, more like the 5:30 range, 5:35.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sounds great. Yeah, okay. So we're going to start at 5:15, but we're going to look at some of the other items on our agenda. We'll start with this, probably at around 5:30, 5:35, something like that. I'm happy to entertain a motion for term.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.